All right, thanks for tuning in. My name is Ted Raiburn. I'm the editorial page editor for The Tennessean. We're having a forum today for Metro School Board candidates. Some of them were unable to be with us today. Bernie Driscoll was traveling. Some of the others, Joanne Brannan and, let's see, Edward Arnold have not been able to make it, and Cheryl Mays. So what we're going to do today is give all of our candidates who are here a moment to introduce themselves, and then we're going to go through some questions. The first person that is going to speak is Rhonda Dixon. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Rhonda Dixon, and I'm a candidate for District Four School Board. I was inspired to run by my granddaughter. Her name is China, and when she went to the fifth grade, she was reading on the second grade level. And I was very concerned about that. I struggled to find a school that I thought would give her the rigor and the structure she needed in order to make grade level. So I searched, and I did find a school. I'm happy to say right now she is excelling, and she is a rising eighth grader. But during my search, what I found out was that there was a lot of inequalities within our school system. In some areas, our schools were performing very well, and in other areas, they weren't doing quite so well. So with that, rather than just sit back and be complaining about what was wrong or what was right or whatever about our school system, I decided that I would try to offer a solution, bringing my leadership skills. I'm a software tester, a consultant lead for HCA, and in my job, it is my responsibility to make sure that I get all our teams together, and my teams are across the world, across the United States, and to make sure that despite different agendas and it's basically, I just have to make sure that everyone is focused on the same thing, which is delivering quality software to our patients. And if I fail doing that, then we would have a lot of patients that just would not fare well in our hospitals.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rhonda. Let me move on. Mary?
Hi, I'm Mary Pierce. I'm running for school board for District Eight. I grew up in Memphis, Tennessee, and watched my father serve on the city school board for 16 years. I've received a journalism degree from the University of Mississippi and thought I might follow your career in a newsroom, but ended up going into professional fundraising, where I was the most recently at Vanderbilt University Blair School of Music. Been married to my husband, Mark, for 22 years, and we have four children, and we've been Metro Schools' parents since 2005. I'm running for school board because public education is probably the most important thing we can do as a city. And I believe that the school board must be made up of members who believe that every single child in this city can learn regardless of the zip code and home life from which they come. And so I believe that we can do this if we will come together as a city and work on this. And two strong public schools make for a strong economy and a prosperous city, and our kids are our future. And we also want to send a clear signal to the community and businesses looking to come to Nashville that we're serious about improving our schools. I think we need to be embracing proven reform efforts that we can all come together and work on, that over time, we will advance our schools and our student outcomes.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna Shepherd, and I'm running for reelection for District Four. I have been serving District Four for the last four years, in the last two years, as vice chair. I have over 20 years of experience around the schools in the McGavick Cluster. When I came on the board, McGavick High School was in a bad state, and they were in danger of state takeover, as a matter of fact. And since that time, we have done a complete turnaround, warranting a visit from the President of the United States this past January. They are, McGavick High School, as a matter of fact, is the shining star of high schools in Metro Nashville Public Schools, and I think I bring a lot to the district in that regard. I've been endorsed by several groups, National Area Chamber of Commerce, Metro Nashville Association of Educators, Women in Numbers, Stanford Children, and most recently, I was told that I am being endorsed by the Greater Nashville Area Realtors Association. So I think that that speaks volumes as to what I can bring in leadership to the district. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Becky Sharp, and I'm running for school board in District Eight. I graduated from Overton High School after attending only Metro Nashville Public Schools first through 12th grade, and then attended Vanderbilt University for undergraduate and graduate school. I have an MBA in international marketing. I have three children, all of whom have attended only MNPS schools. My family is committed to the school system K through 12. I'm also a business owner. I own two businesses and focused on bringing jobs to Nashville. But because of my leadership style, which is one of consensus building and non-micro management, my companies are functioning beautifully. They need me, but they don't want me to micromanage them every day, which gives me plenty of time to do something back for Nashville, which is give back. I'm also a member of a variety of boards, including the Board of Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And because of that, I think I bring a unique mixture of in-the-school commitment today, right now, to our public schools, and in the boardroom experience, which I plan to use to build consensus among all nine board members. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam Swanner, and I am a native Nashvillian. I was a member of the first graduating class of McGavick High School. My son also graduated from McGavick. My daughter graduated from Martin Luther King. Through all the years that I've lived here, I've seen a lot of changes in education, and I decided it was time for me to get involved. I finally had a little more time to spend researching what education needs and able to make good decisions. When you're on the school board, there's a lot of information that you need to go through. I've been a substitute teacher. I am currently, I'm currently a member of the Davidson County Master Gardeners and work with community gardens, and also with a, I have a junior camp that's once every year for a week with nine and 13-year-olds that we go through the total gamut of horticulture and teach about healthy living and all the things that you need to, for a good life. I also go, my husband and I go to downtown Presbyterian Church. There's a lot of reasons why I'm running for school board, and one is the homeless mission that our church has there. We want to be out of the business of providing meals for the homeless. 24,000 meals we provided last year, and I think a lot of that starts with education. And I would really like to see a lot of changes here in Nashville and help some of these issues go away. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Thais Hunter. I'm a Navy veteran, speech-language pathologist. I've worked in metro schools for three years. I've been working at Tennessee State University in the Department of Speech Pathology and Audiology for eight years. My husband and I have lived in District Six for 20 years. We have three children who currently attend Metro Nashville Public Schools, one at Cambridge, one at Nashville Prep, and the oldest is at Hillsborough High School. I've also worked for Tennessee Early Intervention Services, Tennessee Infant Parent Services, and I'm also a PRN worker at one of our local nursing homes in the Antioch, which is Good Samaritan. I've been practicing for 20 years. I've been going in and out of homes, advocating for parents and children for 20 years. I serve on the Graduate Admissions Committee at Tennessee State University, and frequently I see and have the opportunity to observe ACT scores from not only our students here in Nashville, but also from around the country. And I see that outcomes for our students are very low. I have, my 14-year-old child has congenital hypotonia with arthritic arthritis, and because of her physical impairment, so many times, teachers have looked at her and thought that she couldn't learn. She's a very bright child, and my, I've also faced experiences of low expectations for my two African-American male sons. So that is the reason I'm running. I want to advocate for all children, including those who have special needs, those who speak English as a second language, and our city's low-income and minority children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to go into questions now, and one thing I want to ask each of you is, we're going to ask each of you the same set of questions, and as we go around the table in order, just be sure when you respond to a question that you give your name again first, so that our viewers can keep track. Joey Garrison, our education writer, is going to ask the first question. And let's start with, I'm sorry, start with Thais.
Okay. Yeah, I think this, this reelection is really distinguished by the fact that the superintendent's contract is set to expire in about a year. That means, you know, this is the next, potential next board member's, you'll have to make a decision there. When does the conversation, I'm going to need to begin in terms of beginning the search for a superintendent? Or is it possible that the board should maybe extend his contract, particularly for it to go beyond, to go after the election of our next mayor, which we have, which will be taking place in August of 2015? Really, I guess, two separate questions there. When should that begin? And is it possible that maybe we need to extend the contract of Jesse Register?
Again, my name is Thais Hunter, school board candidate for District Six. One of the advantages of knocking doors is that I'm having the opportunity to talk with the constituents of District Six. And honestly, I'm hearing so many mixed opinions regarding whether or not we should start immediately or whether or not we should wait and extend his contract for another year. I think what is going to be most valuable is first getting on the board, which I'm destined to be there, and sitting with the other eight members of that board and making those decisions based upon what they're hearing from the constituents of their districts as well.
Hi, I'm Pam Swanner, and that is very much what we should be doing. We should be listening to everyone that we're talking to. I'm hearing some people from McGavick High School area saying that Dr. Register has done great work. Robin Wall is doing a great job, the principals that Dr. Register has put in place, he's done a good job. But then I'm also hearing that the future, what he has chosen to do going into the future, he's not listening the way that they feel he should. So there is definitely a split as far as the conversation of whether he should stay or whether we should start looking. That conversation needs to start immediately because finding a new director and the vision that we have for Nashville, I think that that conversation needs to start immediately because we need to get the word out of what we need and find that person that fits the bill.
Getting elected comes first, so all of us are working very hard to get elected, and I don't want to get the cart before the horse in terms of where my focus is. I also don't want to pretend that I have experience of the existing nine school board members. We need to start the conversations right after the election. But as a business owner, one of the things I'm very familiar with is the concept of you want someone at the table who wants to be there. So we need to hear from Dr. Register. We need to understand very clearly what his goals and objectives are. Also, in Nashville, I don't think Nashville needs an interruption in service. I think we need consistency right now. The way to implement a strategic plan is to have a plan and work a plan, and I'm very concerned that we might have an interim person. If Dr. Register chose not to stay, that's different, but to ask him to step down, I think would provide a level of interruption that would not be good for our schools or our children. Lastly, I think it is extremely important that not only our future mayor, but leaders from all of our schools, charters, magnet, zoned, private, and business leaders, sit down with our new mayor and our new candidates for superintendent and work on a plan for Nashville that truly is one that's going to create world-class schools here.
My name is Anna Shepherd. I'm currently representing District Four, and ultimately, the decision would, is the director of schools. The director of schools is the only employee of the nine-member school board, so it is very important that we get the right person for that job. It's very important that we listen to the current director of schools. We need to make sure, and we need to have that conversation as soon as the election is over. So we need to first make contact, have a very honest dialogue with our current director of schools, Dr. Register, and ask him what his feelings are. Ask him if he would be willing to stay. And I don't think a one-year extension would do the trick. I think it would need to be at least a two-year contract extension to make sure that we have a seamless carryover from Dr. Register to whomever the new director of schools is. And yes, we do need buy-in from the mayor's office because those two leaders need to work hand in hand. They need a collaborative environment in which to work and make the decisions that are best for each and every student that we have in Metro Schools.
I'm Mary Pierce, District Eight, and I would echo a lot of what's already been said, is that it would need to start, the conversation for superintendent should start soon after the election. I think it will be a long process. And I do think that begins with speaking very openly with Dr. Register and what his vision is for the last, you know, for his next part of his contract. I'm also hearing from people at the doors that there is concern on, are we at a place in our city to attract the very best? And that there is concern there that maybe there is too much tension, and that quite possibly, giving some time to settle down, let Dr. Register continue the work that he's been doing and grow in that relationship with a new board, then we might be in a position to really, to look diligently across the country for who is that person that can come take Nashville to the next level. Do believe it's important to involve the other, the mayor's office and other business and community leaders. We are all in this together. We are one city with one school district, and we have got to work together and make the right, right decision for the next leader for our city.
I agree with everything that everyone else has said. But what I would like to add, though, is that it is important that we start this conversation as soon as possible, and we need to make sure that our board is unified, and because the next superintendent will have to want to come to Nashville. And I think right now, we have the opportunity to show that we have a unified board, we have a unified vision, and that the next superintendent, his vision will be in aligned with the school board. So other than that, I agree with everything that everyone else said.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, Rhonda, go ahead and take, you're going to be the first one on the next question, so keep it simple.
All right.
And so the question here is about school choice, and I'm painting it kind of broadly so you can answer a number of issues that might come to you, or you might feel more pressing, but weigh the amount of attention that's being given to school choice in Metro. And tell me if you think it's too much attention on choices such as charters, even talk of vouchers. Too much attention, not enough attention, or is it about right? And just kind of explain why.
Okay. Rhonda Dixon again, candidate for District Four. So with school choice, I think that we are putting a lot of emphasis on the different types of school choice, charter versus traditional. I think we really just need to concentrate on having good schools in Nashville. I spoke to you earlier, and I said that I struggled finding a school that I thought was going to offer my granddaughter what she needed to excel. But thank goodness, I had a choice in that matter. So as long as our schools are not, and when I say our schools, I mean every school in every zone are not performing up to the expectations that we want for our children. I think we need to welcome having choice. There are a lot of families that are homeschooling, they're sending their children to private schools, they're sending their children across town sometimes to other schools that are not within their district. And so it's a good thing that we do have that choice, but I think we really just need to put more emphasis on improving our school system as a whole and not be distracted by the type of school.
It's a question of choice. I do think we are focusing a lot of time on one particular facet of choice being charter schools. And I think the number is roughly between 5% and 7% of our population, our student enrollment, attends charters. But if we listen to the conversation, it's got to be in the 90, 95% range of how often we discuss the charters. So I know for my personal family, I have four children, and they're all very different. And we did, we came to a point after being in Metro Schools for eight years that we needed to make a different choice for a child, and we had not been accepted to a magnet school. There were no charter schools that would fit her need, and so we ultimately had to do what a lot of families in District Eight and around the city do, and that is to go private. We're over at CPA. So in that regard, I do think the focus needs to be on what happens when that zone school's not working? Or let's be asking those questions of why are parents asking for another choice? I think that would be the focus of the choice, that we could reframe the conversation, is why are people looking for something else? And what can we do to keep them in our schools?
Anna Shepherd, current representative for District Four. I think that Metro Nashville Public Schools currently offers quite a bit of choice around schools. We have over 87 schools, or right at 87 schools, that are open enrollment schools, in which children can opt to enroll if they're not their current zone school. We have currently 20 charter schools in Nashville with five more opening, giving us 25 for the school year 2014-2015 school year. We have quite a bit of choice, and I think that some people are centered around the word charter. Charter schools are here to stay. They're not going anywhere, and as long as they perform like they're supposed to, that's a good thing. Unfortunately, a few of them have not. We've had to close two with the third one looming, and that is very disruptive for those families, and especially for those children who have to find a new home, and that is very disturbing for me. So as long as the, it's a charter school is doing fine for those children, then it's a good idea. But we need to make sure that we vet that process very thoroughly and make sure that those charter school operators know what we want, not what they want, but what we need for our students in Metro.
Thank you. I'm Becky Sharp, and I'm running for school board in District Eight. I agree that the conversation needs to be around, what is the blueprint for Nashville school system? Again, as a business person, we have a five-year strategic plan. We have matching fiscal policies for that plan. And we need a blueprint for Nashville school system that includes charter, magnet, zoned, a variety of different school options so that parents have that choice. I, like everyone here at this table, want to know that when a child steps on the bus, the child is going to step off the bus at a place where education is happening, and then it's a successful place where that child can thrive, and that's not happening in Nashville. I think if we sit down again with school leadership across the system and work on that five-year blueprint and get the city's buy-in for the necessary resources, we don't have enough guidance counselors, we don't have enough social workers, we surely do not have enough college counselors. Some of our great charter schools get the ratio, one guidance counselor or college counselor for 50 kids about. We're not doing that. At Hillsborough High School, the freshman class at Hillsborough of 358 is in the, is the largest in the history of Hillsborough High School, and they have one college counselor. So to critique a school on college boundness when you're not giving them the college counseling resources they need just shows you that we've got work to do. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam Swanner, running for District Four, and Becky had some great points. Whether charter, some of the conversation is, in my opinion, going much the wrong, it's going the wrong way. Because number one, if you have parent participation, if you have ownership, if you have responsibility of your school where your children are currently going, then you have a driving force to make that school the best that it can be. Some of the failures, and we have to say failures because that's the reason we need choice, is because I feel there are so many parents that are not involved. And choice sometimes causes some of that because when I went to Donaldson High School, we loved that school. We had other schools that we, we knew the people that we went to school with. We were monitored, we were watched, the principal knew every one of our names. If we were doing something or were not where we were supposed to be, my dad knew. He knew before I got home, and I was in trouble. And a lot of that has gone from our school system. So if we can bring that back to our traditional zoned schools, then you have community back, you have people watching for your children, you have a trust, you have ownership, and I think that's part of what we're missing right now.
Thais Hunter, school board, District Six. I think as we continue to have these conversations about whether or not we should be talking about choice, or whether or not we should be talking about increasing or improving outcomes, it becomes extremely difficult. And the reason I would say that is because, as I've stated, I have three children who are currently in Metro Nashville Public Schools, and we are in charter and we're in public traditional right now. We've also been to private school, but in, as a very, very involved parent, we were forced out of the public traditional school into a private school, unethically forced. And as I've stated, I've always been a very involved parent, and that is one of the major reasons why I'm running, because there are parents who don't have the skills, they don't have the knowledge, they're expecting great things out of the schools that are in their communities, and those things aren't actually happening. And also, what I'm seeing right now is that approximately 73% of the children who are in Metro Nashville Public Schools are economically disadvantaged. There are not very many choices for those children. What's happening with the other percentages of children that are in Nashville? Nashville is a very affluent city. What's happening is the rich have choices, the poor don't. I don't think that's fair. I'm a taxpayer, and I believe I should have choices, and I should have choices to very good schools. My husband and I have owned our home for 17 years, and throughout those 17 years, our school has been at target zone. So the school of choice hasn't been a great choice for us, and I don't think it's fair as a taxpayer and as an educator, I don't think it's fair to those other children who don't have choices, who can't drive across town to take their children to a great school. Thank you.
Frank Daniels is going to take the next question.
I project.
He does. Please do.
So one of the most fun things that I hear from talking to candidates is knocking on doors, talking to the folks that you're trying to entice to vote for you. And I'm curious as to, you know, what is the most interesting question that you get, or most consistent question that you get when you knock on those doors? And like Joey, I'm going to ask my follow-up question as part of my original question, is what's the question that you get that is the hardest, most difficult for you to answer?
Actually, let's go back to you. Yeah. It helps her with the focus.
So they don't steal my answers.
No time to think about it.
Okay, again, I'm Thais Hunter, school board candidate, District Six. Honestly, the most difficult question that I'm hearing is regarding Common Core. And sadly enough, so many people are mistaken, and they really feel that the school board are the people who are making those decisions, and we're really not. However, there are some extremely valid concerns as it relates to Common Core, and I'm hearing, really, honestly, I'm really hearing terrible things. I can't say that I'm hearing too many great things in District Six. I do know that the goal of Common Core is to increase higher-level thinking skills. I think the goal is wonderful. However, I agree with many of our constituents that it hasn't been implemented appropriately. I also would say that parents are confused, teachers are confused, administrators are confused, and I think right now, even the state of Tennessee is confused as to where we should be going with Common Core. I feel as a future board member, I will make certain that I am informing the constituents of District Six, as well as all of the school districts within Metro Nashville Public Schools, and I will continue to get feedback and offer feedback from our constituents.
Hi, I'm Pam Swanner, again, from District Four, and the one question, it doesn't really relate to education, in my opinion, but they asked me, are you Republican or Democrat? And if I say, you know, why, why does that matter? They say, because I can't vote for you unless you tell me first. They do not want to carry the conversation any further. And then I say, but we want to educate all of our children. Do you want to leave some of our children out because their parents, you know, children are not Republican or Democrat. They all want an education. And so that is where a lot of the conversations start.
And so that is where a lot of the conversations start. Common Core, for people that follow the news and read The Tennessean, seems to be the major question. There are, nobody understands it. And I tell them it's somewhat like derivatives. Everybody was told it was a great thing, nobody could explain it. If they can't explain it to me, and then I can't tell the next person, then it's not a good thing. So we need to understand exactly what it is. I went to three Common Core meetings, and every single meeting, it was explained different. So I can't explain it to anyone else. I hope that one day, if there's some good points, that it can be explained simply, because if it will help the children, I'm all for it. But right now, I cannot explain it. So that gives me a great deal of pause.
I'm Becky Sharp, and I'm running for school board in District Eight. And the hardest question I've received so far, I'm knocking on doors every evening from about five or six till dark, unless I'm at an event, and it's my favorite thing to do. The hardest question I've received so far is what's for dinner? Because the answer is nothing at my house right now. And I have three teenagers who have figured out how to get pretty much every pizza company in town to deliver. And thanks for my family for supporting me this. But the most common question I get is what's the difference between you and your opponent? And I love to answer that question because I'm able to do it positively. My opponent, and I don't say my opponent, my friend Mary Pierce and I are both passionate parents. And that's a great thing, and that's what you want. You want a passionate parent who's involved in the school system, on the school board. But the difference stops right there in terms of experience in an executive role. The school board of nine members is going to be holding a nationally focused, multi-six-figure person accountable for running schools in Metro Nashville. That cannot be a position, in my opinion, that is desire, that has come from someone who wants to do it. That needs to come from someone who has had decades of experience sitting at a boardroom table, bringing people of different opinions together, holding executives accountable, hiring, firing, mentoring. And so when I get that question, I feel like I'm able both to express my gratitude and support for everybody that's running. It's a hard, hard job. But also to make it very clear that I don't think Nashville has time to waste with people on the school board who don't come with experience. Everybody's got passion, that's a given. We've got to have people who walk in the door knowing what they want to do and doing so from years of experience.
Thanks.
Anna Shepherd, current school board member, serving District Four. As I canvass, as I make telephone calls, and as I review questions from my website, I get a smattering of party affiliation questions, I get a few comment around the validity of Common Core. But by far, the question that I've had the most is, what do you feel about charter schools? And I'll tell you why it's that way. Because the district that I represent has pockets of very conservative people. They are very cognizant of the fact that they are taxpayers in this community, and they want their tax money spent wisely. And they don't want it spent on charter schools, because they feel that it's taking money away from the traditional schools. And if you take money away from the traditional schools, then what happens? They become warehouses. And they don't want that to happen, because it's a very community-oriented district. They wrap themselves around McGavick High School, around the four middle schools, and definitely they're in the elementary schools in McGavick. All you have to do is come to McGavick High School on the first day of school or toward the last of the year and see the community involvement in this cluster. We have volunteers from all walks of life showing up, dressed, ready to go to work, welcoming those students in for a new school year. The first time we did that, we got some very strange looks from those students, wondering who these people were, and now they have come to expect it. They look forward to our being there. They give us high fives, they give you hugs because they've seen you there for so long. So we do have a very community-oriented cluster, and I do understand where that question is coming from.
Mary Pierce, District Eight. And a door knocking has been the most favorite thing I've done all summer. We've hit over, close to five thousand doors now. I haven't personally hit them all, but it has been, I've had a lion's share. And I said last week at a forum over in Twelve South that the hardest question for me to answer was also, what is the difference between you and your opponent? And it is the same thing. Part of what makes me uncomfortable is I kind of been wanting to say my message. But what I'm hearing at the door is, we think that we have two strong candidates from District Eight. Tell me, what is the difference? Why should I vote for you? So, so far, no one's questioned my ability to manage or speak with executives. As Director of Development for the Blair School, did travel around the country raising thirty-five million dollars for the Blair School of Music, so I'm comfortable with executives. And we thankfully managed one person with eight other members. But for, to me, to answer that question, it comes down to possibly the definition of excellent. And when I say that, what I mean is, I'm so happy for Becky and her kids when they're thriving, and that that commitment for K-12 and our zone schools is working for her family. But I just have to recognize that it doesn't always work. And so if you are comfortable today to send your child K through twelve and have that unwavering hesitation, no hesitation, unwavering commitment to do that, then maybe I'm not your candidate. But if you have any question, if you have a real hope for significant change, if you're not comfortable or confident today to say that, then you should vote for me. Because I am committed to that honest appraisal of our school, to asking those questions, why, what else would keep you, what do you think our schools are lacking? And get to work and roll up our sleeves and be honest and constructive and bring people together and do that as one city.
Rhonda Dixon, candidate for District Four. I've heard a couple of things as I've knocked on doors, and I've been knocking on doors since May. And my team, my team of volunteers and I, I think we probably hit about two hundred doors a weekend. And so it's a lot of doors that we've knocked. The first question was about Common Core. And I think what I've been hearing from families is that there is a concern that this is like a big federal takeover. And so a lot of the families are concerned that Common Core, some kind of way, will take control away from our local governing of our school system. So I've been hearing a lot of that. I spoke to a couple of teachers, and just, well, not just a couple, but one teacher in particular, I asked her her opinion about Common Core. And she described it as this. She went into a store, and she saw a piece of furniture that she liked, and she brought that piece of furniture home, but it came in a box. And when she opened up the box, there were all these pieces, but there were no tools, no instructions, nothing to come with that piece of furniture or that box furniture. So what was, what she saw on display was not what she got when she, when she brought that piece of furniture home. So I think that what, what the families are concerned about, and I think I'm echoing quite a bit of this, that is already said. But what they're concerned about is that there's not the tools, that Common Core has not been implemented correctly. And so they are missing the support and the directions that they need to really implement Common Core so that it is effective. And I think that as a board member, that we have to be cognizant of that. The other thing that I am hearing is that parents are concerned about the schools in our district. I can't tell you how many families are moving out of our district, because they do have a concern that our schools are not up to par. They are moving to Wilson County, Williamson County, or they're homeschooling. Lot of doors that I knocked on are DCA students. And these are families where the parents have gone to McGavick High School, and they are concerned. They are voicing an opinion that, that concerns me, living in the Donaldson-Hermitage Old Hickory District. Because I love my community. I've been a member there since nineteen ninety-eight. So I'm listening to these families, I'm listening to teachers. And so I think it is challenging to, to say, yes, everything is great, when I know that is not. I'm hearing this.
Okay. Thank you. I think we have time for everyone to make like a one-minute summation about whatever it is you want to say to, to our viewers. And we're going to start with you again. We're just going to keep it consecutive, so you get to go ahead. So you have one minute. Thanks a lot.
Yeah. Well, first of all, thank you so much for having us here. I think it's, it's good to get all of our different views and opinion. And I don't think that we are all so different. I think we all have the passion. We're all in this race because we care about what's happening to our children and the, and the future of our children and the schools in our neighborhoods. Nashville is a world-class city. Our schools should be world-class. And I am running because I think that rather sit back and say what Nashville is lacking, if I don't throw my head into this race, if I don't, if I don't run a good, strong race, I just, I just cannot complain. So that's why I'm running. I have my, I'm involved with my grandchildren's education, I'm raising a granddaughter in school, and so I had, I know firsthand what I want from a school. And so that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Pierce, District Eight. And I do want to close with saying I'm running because I believe that Nashville can do so much better. It is kind of a little bit of a missing puzzle piece for all the it-city talk that we hear about for Nashville. We want our public schools to be something that actually draws others to our city. And I believe that we can get there. But it is going to take all of us working together. And I know there's been question about me being a private school parent. I also have children in Metro Nashville Public Schools. I will have one in a charter and one in a zone public next year, two in private. If I wasn't committed to our schools, I absolutely would not be running. I either am crazy or I really care. And so I do really care, and I'm committed.
Anna Shepherd, currently serving District Four. Again, thank you for having us today. And I'm running for reelection because I was approached by several people who want to keep the momentum going in the positive direction. Are we where we want to be now? We aren't where we want to be. But we have seen a lot of positive change. And I want to make sure that we don't have to stop and reinvent the wheel and make sure that we check, you know, our egos at the door, make sure that we have the, what we need to keep this district moving forward, both my district, District Four, and the district as a whole. We need to make sure we get it right, because we don't get a second chance. So we need to make sure that we keep the momentum going, and that is my pledge for the next four years.
Thank you. I'm Becky Sharp, and I'm running for school board in District Eight. And I feel like a great school, the components of a great school include great leadership, and great leadership attracts great teachers. We need to give our principals more leadership training so that they create a magnetic culture that is managed autonomously. At the new Waverly Belmont, which is going to be phenomenal, MNPS has said, you can run this school. We have, we're not going to push and, and slow you down with bureaucratic red tape. We've got to model that across Nashville. But it can only work if principals in that school understand how to function autonomously, that they understand the ramifications of fiscal policy, that they know how at McGavick and Maplewood, how to bring families in, that they know how at Kip and Lead and Valor, how to incorporate family involvement, that they know at Hillsborough and J.T. Moore, how to reach families who are on the fence about the school and show them that they can get a world-class education right there in a wonderfully diverse environment. That is going to require that, again, we bring on a superintendent who knows how to work this type of system. And in order to do that, to attract the best superintendent, we have to be able to sit in a room with all the school board members and have him or her look each person in the face and say, tell me how you've done this in the past. And that's what I'm bringing to the table, experience doing it, passionate about it. And my children are going to be in high school four more years at Hillsborough, and I'll be in there every day with them.
Becky talks really fast. Okay. I'm Pam Swanner, District Four. I worked for a company that had, we had sixty international distributors. I was in sales and marketing. Those sixty cultures, I, that's not even a drop in the bucket for what Nashville has. So deal, being on the school board and dealing with all the different cultures that, at the different school levels, because even though you're a school board member and you represent District Four, we also work with all the school board members for the whole community of our city. We used to be called Athens of the South, and we were a great city. We had more universities than anywhere. And some, for some reason, we were rebranded Music City. I would like to see Athens of the South come back as, as we grow. A million people are, you know, they say that Nashville will grow by a million people. And we, the mayor needs that, the governor needs that, so Nashville can grow in a positive way and make our city stronger and bring jobs. And we have an educated force that can supply what they need and not leave any of our city out. We have sections in District Four that feel like they're being left out. And I would like to see every, every section of our district and of our city addressed with all of the different things that we've talked about here. It will, we can do it.
Tyce Hunter, school board candidate, District Six. I would like to say that I've, I'm a charter proponent, I'm a magnet school proponent, I'm a private school proponent, I'm a public school proponent, and especially for great schools. Right now, seventy-three percent of our kids in Metro Nashville Public Schools are economically disadvantaged, and an overwhelming majority of those children are not at grade level in reading and math by the time they get to middle school. Right now, we have some excellent programs or measures to weed out those charter schools that aren't functioning well. And I've had those experiences with my own kids. I had a child at Drexel, and I had a child at Smithson-Craighead, who ended up with a fractured nasal bone, and he lost the upper left quadrant of his vision. So we have some excellent measures for repairing those problems. But we're not talking at all about what to do and what's happening with our money that's being pushed into our public traditional schools. We, I think we have a great management system, again, for our charter schools, whether or not they need to grow, or whether or not they need to stop growing. I think we have that under control. But we have to do something about what's happening now with the schools that we are currently funding, and they're underperforming. Again, I would appreciate your vote, I would appreciate your support, and thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you all. I really appreciate how.
Disappointing, it was.
Exactly, exactly. Everything was very concise and to the point and great remarks all around, so we really appreciate that, and I know our viewers do too. So I want to thank Maria Devereen, she wants to thank you, I'm sure, and Stephanie Murray, our Vice President of Content, Frank Daniels, Joey Garrison, and myself, Ted Rayburn, for attending our forum. And I just want to remind the people reviewing right now that there are now less than two weeks left of early voting before the August seventh primary, and in this case, general election. So please do get out and vote as soon as you can. We want everybody to vote that can. Thanks a lot for tuning.